There's a lot of options, so I want you to know if you decide that that's something that you share too, wanna talk about it. I'm happy to come up and we can actually.
There's a lot of options, so I want you to know if you decide that that's something that you share too, wanna talk about. I'm happy to come up and we can actually get into numbers and get into how it's actually mechanically worked. So that you can see it, I'm happy to do that and I got no pressure. Next year, if you really wanna think about it next year, or you get halfway through your year and your budget looks better for some reason, you wanna try something. You wanna try to increase this one a little bit, the downside of what you do is the money that you're paying, you're paying overtime to deputies to come out. Okay, so when they come out, I don't use part-time, we don't use any part-time employees. So the deputies that work up here that come up and do this detail, while I don't allow them to charge detail pay, which is like if a private company called us in. They pay special pay to contract the union more than that, I don't allow them to do it with the town too, cause I want people out here. But every one of them that comes out gets overtime, so that eats into your money. And so it cuts down on the amount of time that, you know, say, I don't know the numbers, I should know it, but say I did forty details in your town. If there's cost raises and insurances and all that go up, they're paying those benefits, we may be doing twenty-five.
Right.
Then we're doing twenty-two, and then we're down to eighteen, and then it, you know, it makes me nervous that. Then you're not as present as people would want you to be, and that's kinda what's happening. So you can, the thought processes, can you, like a couple towns move up a little? And then they stepped into a full-time contract, so you're not doing it all at once. Or the way that Clifton looked at it is like, we're spending one, but we're actually getting twice. The amount of people, and then a lot of that, the most important part is it's the immediate. If not, you're covered by the zone deputy, and that zone deputy, because of the way that we're structured now, he could be in Carmel, could be out in Corinth. And it puts a lot of pressure on us trying to get back here. And it certainly hurts the day-to-day, like setting on the main road. I love it when a citizen calls and complains, cause the deputy's sitting on his computer beside the road. I like that, because it tells me they're doing exactly what I'm asking them to do, don't set up the station, don't hide in Bangor. I want you out in the community, doing your reports in your car, because you're out there, so people can see you. And you can still get your work done, right? So that's, that's effective, rather than setting in Bangor at the office, or somewhere in an office typing reports.
The biggest deterrent there is is that cruiser.
Yeah.
The biggest deterrent there is is that cruiser.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And I live on, off the Bradley Shore Road, just down the road from Ryan.
Yeah.
And we love having him on the road.
Yeah.
For a whole bunch of reasons.
Yeah. You know. He does a great job, he's a good person on top of being a deputy, he's a good person, cares about the area and. I'm, I'm, we're blessed, you know, I got guys living and girls living in kinda different districts all over, and our agency's grown a lot, we have some of the. Greatest technology is, I'm, I'm a fighter for going out and finding some grants, so it's not local funding, and. We have some of the most high-tech stuff of any agency, and I think, as you heard me talk about earlier, that's why some of the municipalities are reaching out to us. Brewer, Bangor called us yesterday for our drone team, uh, we have a drone team, we've. We found, uh, our very first man that we found was a seventy-seven-year-old man in Lincoln, who had Alzheimer's, who'd gone out in the woods. They had state police dogs and canines and wooden dogs all day searching for this man. He wandered out in the woods and they couldn't find him, we had a drone up in the air for twenty minutes. From the time that it left its mat till the time it landed was just twenty minutes, we found him. And we're able to get a one who's still alive, it had fallen down in the woods, two, two miles or so up into the woods. That, that drone is, is far more than we originally thought we were gonna use up for mapping crashes. That would be our primary thing, cause a lot of these roads, when you block up this road for an hour, you can really cause traffic issues. We can come map something with some of these in a quarter of the time now. And so we thought that will be our primary mission, but we've helped fire departments when there was a fire somewhere, we put up the drone. And they think they've got an acre, we put up the drone and, and put it right to their, our laptops, they can see, you know, you've got three or four acres going back, cause you can put that drone in. Amazing piece of equipment.
You got the infrared on it?
We have infrared on it, yeah, it's got drop capabilities, we just got a grant, we put, um, uh, life jackets in every single deputy's car. So that if we're going out, but we have ponds all over, lakes all over, we can carry life jackets on this, we carry eighteen pounds on our drone. Oh, and we can drop it, we are watching dropping keys at four hundred feet, they can drop it within a foot of view. So there's a lot of capabilities.
Good stuff.
Again, I'm going, I apologize.
May I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
On these radar speed limit signs, does the sheriff submit with them all a DOT?
Both. Yeah, so DOT has some, we have some, we've had.
Portable ones.
The little portable ones, so we've just, uh, came into thirty, uh, but they gave us the sign and no trailer. And so, so I'm trying to find some funding for the trailers, we've had mixed reviews on those, to be honest, some people think they're effective. Sometimes I feel like it's thrown, somebody throwing the, the green flag, you have people that wanna challenge that machine. Because it doesn't take pictures, it doesn't record, it's really a warning device, and we have more people sometimes raise holy okay, because they'll see one and then they just. They kind of glorify them.
That's one of the reasons I'm getting it, cause of speeding on Cran Street early in the morning.
Yeah.
People trying to get to work at last minute.
Which is setting up.
Sixty, seventy miles an hour right down by my house every day.
Yeah.
Every day.
So that's another good reason I wanna be careful talking about schedules and stuff, um. We struggle on early morning schedules for these type of contracts. So they're working around the other guy's schedules, the, the flexibilities are nice, because it's not every Friday, it's not every Saturday guaranteed. It could be Sunday afternoon, cause people are like, why didn't you do this Sunday afternoon? I guarantee you, everybody's home on Sunday afternoon, I drive by, they see my cruiser. I'll drive by your house five times tonight, you don't even know I'm there, cause it's night. Right, so you could say, well, we're there all the time, but we're not there when you're outside, you drive by on a Saturday afternoon, somebody mowing the lawn. They see the cruiser, they like, they, I know they're out here, so that's, that's a challenge.
I've seen the cruisers a lot.
Yeah.
They could get there between six-thirty and seven.
You know the gentleman emailed me about it, that's.
No, I haven't emailed you.
I wanted, that's a gentleman that emailed me about it, he immediately wrote back to me and said.
My neighbor probably has.
Yeah, and he, he wrote me back a couple days later, he goes, thank you, and I'm like, that's effective, cause that's what your town manager does, if they hear it in the town office. They'll let us know, and we get one of these guys, we'll send them right up there, and then they can say, I can just go up here and spend some time. They don't have to go answer calls everywhere else in every other town, they're just gonna come up here and put that time in, that's what it takes to deter them.
My neighbor can't even water his dogs, he's scared.
Yeah, that is awful, speeding's just awful, it's everywhere. So again, options, no, no, no issues for us, we're happy with it, I just appreciated the time to be there, share some, some updates and.
Thanks.
Love to come back and, uh, I won't talk so much here.
Please get from you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry to tie up your meeting.
No worries.
No worries.
I go home, see what Mrs. Moore, which was gonna. Great, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for reading that.
Yeah, I, I, apparently the mic was off, um, so some residents that were listening in didn't hear, but. I'll just recap for them that the, the sheriff has offered an opportunity for us to look into. Gaining more patrol by joining the town of Eddington and Clifton, uh, for additional deputy. Obviously, there's a substantial cost increase for what we're paying now, but it's something we should possibly look into for, you know, our future budget.
Yeah, another option would be budgeting more dollars, just for the coverage that we have as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Listen, I heard Troy say that he has had conversations with Eddington and Clifton.
Yeah.
Have we had any?
I know, yeah, we had with Milford, uh, Milford asked me, um. A couple months ago, like a month ago, about it, and I said, we've already created our budget, you know, it's already gonna vote by the, the voters. The time we start discussing it would be like in November, December, getting ready to present it to you for February, so. Um, yeah, definitely a conversation to have in the future.
If Eddington and Clifton are willing, I mean, certainly something we ought to put on our, our thought pattern.
Um, let me see, the next thing on the agenda is a review from the Ministry of the Last Meeting, six-twenty-four, we need a motion to.
So won't.
So motion's been moved, um, to accept amendments from the six-twenty-four Town Council meeting, as presented, any questions or comments on those, corrections? If I will vote, Dwayne.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
I was not here, so I will not vote. The next item on the agenda is citizens' requests. What do we have for citizens' requests?
He's got two.
Absolutely.
He probably answered one of them, just speeding on Cran Street, going one, it's not on everybody, but this, out of hand, I mean, they're flying by. And my neighbor next to me, I ain't gonna tell his name, but he walks his dogs early. And he said, Rick, it's so bad, he's like, I wave my arms up and they just fly, he, he's got Troy's number, I'll break his phone, call him. So that's, he knows who I was talking about, I have an email myself. And, but I was wondering about one of those old many signs, I don't know if it do any good, slow them down, might just challenge them to go fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting that Troy mentioned it, I mean, I see that, I think myself, you know, not that I've done it. I think people just try to see how high they can get that number.
They get a little one, when you cut off from one-seventy-eight to go to Route nine before you get to Route nine, pull that hill.
Yeah.
They get a little portable one right there, twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah.
They said, gee, we ought to have one of them on Cran Street, see if it's.
Well, they waste your money.
The other thing is, we wanted to talk about, like, twice in the last month, I've almost gotten an accident. Going to Graywood Street, damn, the line, I put my boat into where it can't. People coming up Baker Lane, I do not have my signal on to take a right, and they pull right out, they only come to a complete stop and almost hit me. I know of two accidents in the past, people get hit dead, and it was Carol Jackson, I believe. She's got it, they gotta start stopping, either that or we move the stop sign and put it on Cran Street, have us stop. So Baker Lane can go, then we'll go straight all the way, one or the other, cause they don't stop, they just roaring through the stop sign. Nothing you can do about it, I don't know what, what the answer's gonna be, they can't read or something, I don't know.
I think, you know, I, I, I live on a private road here in town, and same thing, we have a stop sign at the end of a road, but we're. So I think people are so accustomed that nobody's ever gonna go that way, or nobody's ever gonna come from that direction, that like you said, they just.
I come up back to the landing with the stop sign, more than one five, I stop and look, make sure there's nobody coming out of Baker Lane. Like, oh, they're gonna hit me, cause that'll get sawed.
Some of that issue is the same as them speeding down Cran Street, they're late for work, right?
Yeah.
The stop sign don't mean anything when you're late for work.
No, no, they're gonna get up a little early, right?
Exactly.
I don't have to go to work, I'm at five o'clock.
So you see the issue with going into the landing or coming out of the landing?
Going in.
Going in.
Going in, if, cause they assume you're down to take a right, going right away, I'm pulling the boat.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna put a boat in the water up there, I'm gonna get out of there, you know? And there's no, I don't have my blinkers on, just the other day, a guy came out of there and he, he was that far, and he had to step on it and spin his tires. Cause I was ready, I had to lock mine up. Just to hear right there. That's, that must be inside, the other thing is, um, I call the stop sign. I noticed this town office doesn't have something we probably should have. And that's a flagpole, and there's a flagpole, I don't think it's being used down in the park in Boyton Street, I ain't seen a flag on it for a few years.
The problem is, is that I don't have anybody to maintain it.
With the flag up and down?
Yeah, cause it's supposed to be taken down at night, it's supposed to be lit, it's supposed to mean, you know, it's gotta maintain a certain standard. And I don't have anybody that volunteers to do that.
It could stay up at night if it's lit.
If it's lit.
If it's lit.
Mm-hmm. So the pot and flagpole next door, I'm just, cause this is my thing, the flagpole next door, when it broke. You know, I, we didn't have that in our budget, cause I didn't, wasn't thinking flagpole, and it cost us over two thousand dollars to fix it.
Something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Who, who put that one in Boyton Street Park?
That was, that's been here since I've been here, I'm, I'm assuming Mr.
I ain't seen a flag on it a long time.
Yeah.
But that would be a perfect fold to move up here, we'd have to put a light on.
And maintain it and be responsible for it.
Well, if the flag gets torn, you buy another flagpole on there, very much maintenance to a flagpole, you know, light and flag, so.
Yeah.
That's just a thought, you know?
Well, appreciate that. One, one thing I was thinking about stop sign, would it help to put a white line at the stop sign across the road? Cause I know that there's, there's a few of them around, and they, they're more visible if you, you know, the stop signs there, but you see that white line also. I don't know if that'd help or not.
They're hitting everybody.
No, I know that.
Few of them that just think you're gonna take a right and you're going straight through.
A few years ago, that corner, when you stop at the corner of Baker Lane, you couldn't see down on Cran Street all that well. But they cleaned out a lot of trees there in front of that log cabin, I don't know the name of the folks that lived there, but.
Neither, I know who it used to be, what the tennis court is.
Yeah. Now they've cleaned that out a lot, so you can see the traffic when you roll onto the end of Baker Lane, and that's why people aren't stopping.
This guy saw me the other day.
Yeah, but he came out anyway.
Oh, yeah, he thought I was turning, I had no blinker on, he wasn't looking for that, he just, he wanted to go. We didn't get hit, so there was no accident, it's getting dangerous.
Well, I almost got hit on Baker Lane then one day myself, when I turned onto the road, there was a car in front of John Milligan's place. Coming my way and was on the phone.
That's a bad car.
And I went off the road, almost hit the stop sign, I'm the, not the stop sign, but the speed sign on the right-hand side, and that's how far out I was.
That's a bad.
I got stopped, but, and he never even stopped at the stop sign after he, he almost hit me. So I know what you're talking about.
And the last thing I got, and you guys probably all are aware of this, I don't know if it's the First Amendment rights of law. One-fourteen Cran Street, he's got signs out there, it shouldn't be there. Shouldn't be there, but little kids walking by and stuff, the words are on those signs, you might have a thousand signs, but there's two of them, shouldn't be there. You, I don't know if you've read it.
It's not an uncommon problem, there are signs there all the time, they're objectionable.
These are new, break that one this week.
Yeah.
The sheriff was just out there.
He saw, he knows where I'm talking about.
Yeah, he's got one out there now with the cops.
Yeah, he's got a number, maybe it's a cop's number, policeman's number, just get, you know what I mean?
I was out there today.
What is wrong with this guy?
Oh.
I tell you what's really wrong is the courts.
Yeah.
We cannot get the courts to act here. I wanted to ask Troy, you know, what frustrations he had with the courts, but I think his frustrations and our frustrations are probably not the same.
Are easy, the signs are more now with the other hand, those two shouldn't be there at all.
He has no common courtesy for anybody.
I was gonna go take pictures, my wife says, don't do it, to be down here fucking you.
Yeah, I was, I was, I go down every week and take pictures, I was just there today.
Kids, kids walking by or riding bicycles, it shouldn't have to see you.
No, absolutely not.
I agree.
And some people won't walk by there because of that.
Is it words? I mean, are they words or symbols or?
The words, 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 I don't wanna say it here, but it shouldn't be said.
Because when it's.
Very bold.
Yeah.
Totally inappropriate.
Did one the other day and I was sucking.
Yeah, that's not what I'm calling red.
It's crazy. Attention game.
Yeah. Yeah.
Dude, you'll be out there early in the morning, and hollering and screaming at nobody, just swearing right out of his mouth, which. Constant for ten, fifteen minutes, walking up and down his driveway, just bawling, swearing. Cause what the heck is going on up there?
He's part of the mental illness unit.
Apparently, I've missed a lot of this, cause usually I'm going in the summer and gone in winter, last two years I've been here. Yeah, this place is getting out of anything, you know?
Trust me, it's year round.
Usually I'm only here for a couple months in the fall, by the season, I'm gone, yeah. Just catching up until.
We, we do have a court date, uh, July twenty-third, um.
That's next week.
Next week, and I don't expect anything to happen, because we've been going to court. I, I, I mean, it's like every three or four months I go to court, and the judge literally says, I invite you to come. Because it's, it's very, it's very interesting, the judge literally says she doesn't know what to do in this situation.
The judge doesn't.
The judge. Um, she has contacted Department of Human Services to demand that they take guardianship, and they refuse to do so. Um, he has been awarded a, an attorney to represent him in a, in a civil matter, which isn't typical. Usually if you're arrested, you're, you know, you have a right to an attorney, but this is a civil matter, and. He's been, the state of Maine is paying for him to have attorneys to represent him, um. And he wants every one of them fired, um, one of them worked really hard for him actually, and, um. Produced some valuable argument about why he should, um, get some help, and, uh. She literally says, I'm sorry I'm putting the town in this situation, I don't know what to do about it. She refused to allow us to condemn his property, because she does not want him to be homeless. It's next Friday at twelve, uh, next Wednesday at two-thirty, if anybody's bored. It's next Friday at twelve, uh, next Wednesday at two thirty, if anybody's bored, it's nice and cool in there. It's very, it's, you know, I, last time we went, um. He was yelling at her and yelling at me and yelling at our attorney, and I simply said, Matt, your honor, may I speak? And she said, no, you have to speak through your attorney. And I said. So finally she recognized my face, so he's been yelling at you, but that's okay, and she let me speak for, I don't know, three, four minutes, not even. She goes, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Wow.
We don't understand what she's saying.
It's not just one judge, it seems to be all of them. Because there's been, I don't know how many, Melissa, maybe four that I can think of.
This last justice that we've had has been very sympathetic towards them. So.
Yeah, they don't mind apologizing to him right there.
The bit they changed is, like, they looked across the street.
Well, I, I, I sent the, I sent a picture to the justice with a simple on my letterhead that said, just curious if you would like to live next door to us.
Yeah.
So.
I'd just like to have it out your picture window. The twenty-some years, I don't know. Twenty years, so.
Believe me, I, I am probably more frustrated with that situation than, I, I can't say it to neighbors, because they live with it every day.
It's got your name all over it.
Oh, but I deal with it, Rick, every single day of my life, in work, out of work. Emails, phone calls, grocery store, restaurants.
He called you?
No, residents called me and complained, people go.
People.
Oh, that's how manager.
What is the town doing? What is the town doing? How come the town's not doing anything?
You try.
It's just not for them to think that the town's not doing anything, but the reality is, it's.
Courts.
The courts.
I looked last week, because I got the notification of the court notice, and I was gonna write this lengthy letter for the judge justice, and our attorney. Didn't want me to, he didn't even want me to send a letter, period, but I did, but, um. I think we're up to like twenty-three thousand dollars in legal fees, but this last bout. That's not even counting the years prior.
And he don't have to pay anything?
No, he was ordered to pay legal fees. He was ordered to pay fines, he was ordered to, he was ordered by a court to clean up his property and to remove all of one sign. The sign can say whatever he wants it to say, and only can be one, and it can only be ten by ten. And he was ordered to do that, and he could change the sign every day, it doesn't have to be.
He's just adding them.
He's just adding them.
Appreciate you coming in, honestly, and, and it's always good to have, you know, people to s- speak their, their minds and what they're seeing, what they're feeling, anything else for citizens' requests? Back to Larry's suggestion, you know, I know we're gonna have some roadwork done, I, I don't know if a white line on that side of the end of. Baker Lane where it hits cram would make any difference, I, I know in some communities too, I think they probably have like a solar powered. Um, like a little light around the stop sign, just, I have nothing, people don't know that it's, I don't know what the cost of something like that is, but.
I don't either, I, I've talked to DOT because, uh, the, uh, Cran Street entrance. And the cost of adding a light there and the power, um. And they don't really have any suggestions, but I can definitely give them a call and ask if there's a suggestion for that area as well.
Solar.
Solar, yeah.
Would it be, would you have to worry about it, would it be cheaper on his idea and, and Larry's idea, with the white line, to have him also paint, please stop?
S D M B.
Please stop, you know, because not everybody's turning. Might save one accident.
That's what it's like, slow, slow, slow down, spike that ahead.
I mean, they, they have, you know, some options like speed bumps and things like that, but those are gonna be taking, what are they taking out, and, you know, where and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other citizens' requests for this evening? Well, we'll check the, uh, the live stream later as well, if anything comes in that way. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is managers' report.
Okay, um, the shim pavement work will be starting, um, I think on Thursday for Boynton Street, Cran Street and Highland Avenue. Um, so just to remind you, that is, the shim work is part of the chip seal treatment, so the shim evens the pavement out. And then they'll come back in mid-August and apply the, um, tar and small stones to the pavement, and so. Just wanted to let you know that that's in the process. Um, our new website is live, I don't remember, but we changed our platform for our website to become more ADA compliant. Um, to have local, um, assistance, because our previous provider was somebody from England, just because of the situation. But this company is from Bridgeton, Maine, and, uh, we are live and we've been working with them to do updates, so. If you have a minute, you wanna take a grander around and let me know what needs to be changed or missing, we would appreciate it. I worked on doing the RFP for Viola Rand School, and I actually emailed that to you on Friday, so you would have an opportunity to read it over the weekend. Um, I didn't ask for any comment back, since I wanted you to be able to do so in a public hearing or this public forum. But I would like to get the RFP out as soon as I could, I'd like to advertise it for this weekend with a due date of August twenty-one. And therefore you could have an opportunity to review the proposals on August twenty-sixth, and if you need more time, September ninth. So, did you get a chance to read it over, and did you have any comments?
I had one change on the second paragraph of the, uh, identification.
Yes, you had asked, uh, he had noted that I hadn't put when the meeting was going to be, when the council would review it. And I have changed that, the council will begin reviewing by August, uh, twenty-sixth.
Other than that, I received it when I was camping on the coast and I gave that thing a fine tooth comb. I can't see anything else wrong with it.
On, on page three, real quick, uh, there's a, one of the type, it says asterisk, 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 question mark, question mark, question mark, and then three more asterisks. So it's a transfer of property.
I think I fixed that, you might have gotten a later one.
Okay.
Did you, was that the one you got in the email, or is that the? Okay, that one, yeah, I, I changed that, that one that you emailed, um, some of the things that I changed in that mark was, um. That, the, the bid is, um, a broad bid, so like if somebody wanted to bid on the whole fossil. Yeah, that type of thing, um, that asterisk included, I didn't know how the, the deed would be transferred, if it would be by court claim or by deed. And it will be by regular deed, which it states in there, so that's what that asterisk, I referred to.
And there weren't any requirements on, by the town or the council to say we would prohibit?
No, it's for the best interest of the town of Bradley, that's highlighted several times, so you'll get to choose what you think is the best interest of the town of Bradley. Okay, so we're good to move forward?
Let, you know, I'll type one typo, I'll tell you what.
Okay, I knew you'd find a typo. Okay, um, regarding forty-three Highland Avenue, um, as we talked, I was going to try to find a real estate agent to list to the property. And I was gonna try to find something local, our local real estate agent here in Bradley is Jody Hammond. Um, and so I spoke to him, and he has gone and reviewed the property, though he did not enter it, because he was, um. Afraid of rodents and the mess that was inside the property, but he would like to, he thinks that he could list, start listing the property at fifty-five thousand dollars. So if the town council would, uh, like to move forward with that, I can start working with him to get that property listed.
We're contained by the law to do it anyway.
We are contained by the law to realist, to list it with a real estate, and the real estate agent has to give us an opinion on what the highest value. That they would set that at would be fifty-five, and I also did have a conversation with him too, is that this isn't stated in the law, but it's not stated in the law. That we can have a conversation to make sure that the sale is going to the right person. So I don't want somebody to come in and purchase that home for fifty-five thousand dollars and think that they can live there. And, and sustain a life, so we have to talk about, about, you know, making it hap- habitable and what the, what the future use would be. Um, so I did talk to him about that, I don't want another one fourteen Cran Street in my pocket. And, and I don't want him on, on, right, exactly, exactly.
How much acreage is there again?
Um.
How much two was there?
I think it's almost two acres, one and a half, but it's very, I don't know if you were part of the meeting, um, that we did a soil test.
Actually on the note.
Yeah, and that was discovered that it's, uh, very clayey, uh, material that is not suited for drainage, so. One point four seven acres is the acreage. Um, I already talked about the court date on July twenty-third at two thirty. Our new photocopy, I worked on that, and that's set to be installed on July twenty-second. And the fire department can get the old one, and the old one that we had prior will be disposed of by the company. Um, and then, um, I had emailed you about a request to change the August twelfth meeting. To either Monday, the eleventh, or canceling it, um, as I explained in my email, I have a vacation scheduled around that time, and it would be easier if I could have the twelfth off. As well.
I think in the absence of any pending business, we could probably just cancel it.
Okay, we can see how that.
I would agree.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all I have for my managers' report.
Any questions, comments on managers' report?
Yes. And then Highland Avenue property, I wonder if you're aware of it, crossing the walk, all the other land that they just sold, it's up to sale.
Yes, yeah, that's actually a really good opportunity for somebody, except for the land in that area isn't very good, but I think it is back further.
The wall way behind me, Richard, very, very sure.
Yeah.
Because I called him, for permission to hunt there every year.
Yeah.
He said yes and no, remain, as long as I still own it, yes.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's, uh.
Sold.
If it's a no, I'll let you know who bought it and contact them.
I think that there's land adjacent to that that's also for sale on Great Works Street.
What's that?
I think there's another lot that's for sale up back.
Yeah, the one behind that.
Yeah. That, these are.
These arts, that's for sale too.
Yeah, but kind of land.
Guy that's advertising, he got all the pictures of, of, um, bullets land, all the pictures, like, I went to see Mark, I said, you know, these pictures for sale, the yellow land. He asked permission to go to look at his lot just to get up there, I started showing the pictures, he, he pretty upset with the guy. But they're still online, it's all.
That's a private sale, that's there, that one, yeah.
Right.
Because we probably get a call a day about that land that's listed either on Craigslist or somewhere. And it's kind of landlocked, it doesn't have any access to it, so.
Which one?
The one out back of.
Highland Avenue?
The big U land.
I thought there was an access where the old greenhouse was, go with, there's a radio station or something.
That's what they say, but it's not in a deed.
Oh, because that used to, they, they own everything.
Yeah.
There was a greenhouse, they tore it down. And they, they owned it all one time.
The dairy house.
Yeah, but they pulled that one down, I thought that was the access to go back there, because.
It's not in a deed.
Oh.
So in order for them to build on it, we would need to have a deed, they need to show needed access for frontage, boat frontage.
So Big U don't own all the.
Big U does, but there's another property behind him that's been for sale, that you're referring to, there's two parcels for sale back there.
Well, the other one's Lee's Arts next door.
It's behind, it's behind. It's behind, yeah.
Land behind the school, that's for sale, they would think.
You'll have to come and look at them then.
Yeah.
You wanna buy it?
Well. Not at this age. Fifty years ago, maybe.
Any, anything else on the managers' report? If not, we will jump down to new business, where do we wanna start there, what's up?
Well, the first and easy one is a motion to approve the treasurer's disbursement warrant for employee wages, benefits and state fees.
Well, sorry, I just, I wonder if the word warrant there is the right word, it's policy, right?
Yes, because those are called warrants, and those are disparate, allow us to disperse the warrants. Policy on treasurer's disbursement warrant, so it allows us to disperse those warrants.
Right, but this, this document that we're signing every year is not a warrant.
Right, but it's a policy to allow us to disperse those warrants.
Policy.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second the motion that was made. So there's a motion to approve the policy on the treasurer's disbursement warrants. For employee wages, benefits and payment of state fees only, so.
More comments and catch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other, any questions on that policy? If not, we'll vote, Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Mark's and I, do we need to sign one of these?
Yes, please.
I gotta go in.
You gotta go. So that was A.
Uh, the tax commitment.
Yes.
So I gave you a couple of options on our tax rate, uh, as you know, our tax rate in twenty-twenty-four was, for fiscal year twenty-one-four was eleven. Um, I gave you a couple of options, um, and we can discuss them. The first option is eleven-seven with an overlay of nineteen thousand four seven, forty-seven. Uh, option two, eleven-seventy-five with an overlay of twenty-nine thousand thirteen. And option three, eleven-eight with an overlay of thirty-eight thousand nine seventy-nine. And we can work out other, I have it, um, up there if you guys want to do some different, uh, options as well. So I use an example of a person who has a two hundred, a home valued at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Their current, their tax rate for last year, the tax bill for last year was two thousand seven hundred and fifty. And depending on what option you choose, it would increase obviously either fifteen dollars per month, sixteen dollars a month, or seventeen dollars per month. Or twenty, two hundred dollars a year, hundred and eighty-seven dollars a year, or hundred and seventy-five dollars per year.
And we, uh, we used up all our surplus last year, correct?
For the R S U, yes, yeah.
Got from the council?
The overlay is a pretty important concept, obviously, that's what we use, should we have a budget expenditure that we didn't claim.
Uh, overlays are used for abatements, if a person comes in and requests an abatement at town council, for instance, um. Overlay is also built, uses to build our undesigned funded surplus, um, which we have used for specific projects in the past. When I first came, we used to use it for reduction of municipal taxes. However, it was going down really quickly, so we kind of stopped that process, and it also makes the tax rate. Deviate, because it actually acts as like additional revenue, and then if we don't use it the next year, then your tax rate goes up twofold, as if whatever, if you would just maintain it consistent.
So, so the point is that the overlay actually works to contain the tax rate each year.
The use of it, yeah.
I guess if there's no other objections, I would, I would make a motion to go down the middle of the road. With point one-one-seven-five.
I'm gonna second that. So motion has been made a second to set the tax commitment from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six as one-one-seven-five. Which would be, um, you get an example that Melissa provided about a sixteen-dollar a month increase for like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar valuation. Allowing for a potential overlay of twenty-nine thousand and thirteen dollars. Any questions or comments about that? But we'll vote, Dwayne?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Mark is on.
Uh, the second, the third item is, I need you to set the interest rate cables on prepayments, so any prepayments that are needed twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six. We would not, the person would not be eligible to collect interest on those prepayments.
So move. Second to. Motion to main set, to set the interest rate for delinquent, delinquent taxes, that's all right?
Uh, no, it's prepayment, so people come in and prepay their taxes, and some towns encourage that, and they, they give them a percentage.
Okay, this is the interest rate for pre, uh, paid for prepayments, for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six at zero percent. Any other questions or comments on that? But we will vote, Dwayne?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Mark's and I?
And then I set the interest rate on abatement, so if somebody comes in and makes a payment. And then I set the interest rate on abatement, so if somebody comes in and makes a payment and then they request an abatement and the town council grants that by law, we are required to pay them interest and we are required to pay four percent below what we're going to set for the tax, for the tax rate, so that is going to be three point five percent.
So move, second. Any questions or discussions? We'll vote, Larry.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Dwayne.
Hi.
Marx and I.
And one that I didn't put on there, I just was noticing, is that we have to set the tax rate on delinquent taxes.
That's on ours.
Yeah, okay, we don't.
Okay, it's on, it's on online, okay, great, perfect. Why didn't I do that?
I'll make a motion to set that interest rate for delinquencies at seven point five percent.
Second.
Any questions, comments? We'll vote, Dwayne.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Marx and I. And then we also have one here to set the due dates. I'll make a motion to set the due dates for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tax commit- tax commitment. Of course, number six, twenty twenty-five and February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-six. We'll vote on that one, uh, Dwayne.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Marx and I.
Okay.
Any other new business from you, Melissa?
None.
Any other new business from the council?
I have just one quickie. Um, we have uh uh in the past, you will recall out on our little chemo colony we have out there. Uh, we had a huge bear problem a couple of years ago around the dumpsters. And uh, it's leading to that again. Uh, and what we have decided to do to help remedy that problem and also the health hazard by people overloaded, uh, the two dumpsters that we have there now. Um, I have pictures, but I won't show you, uh, the overflow mess, um today JT set a third dumpster. And uh, he's charging us a hundred and eighty-five a month um, for that, uh, for the next four months. Um, what I'm asking for, I know, not in this year's budget, but next year's budget, if his contract uh, consideration for his contract to be augmented uh for the four months period to provide that third dumpster um, then the cost, total cost would be seven hundred and forty dollars.
Additional.
Pardon?
Additional seven hundred and forty dollars for the four months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He mentioned, I think, in discussions with Ryan, they've chatted about it uh, a five month period, but I don't see any need to go through October because the summer, people who are there just summers or have gone. But I think part of our issue is that several of the properties have turned into Airbnb's and they have an unmitigated uh amount of company, noticed all kinds of traffic on the road and I think that's where a lot of it's coming from, frankly, but anyway, I just put that on the table, so we'll get it in the notes.
Who's paying for the third one this year, Charlie?
We are.
Yeah.
Actually, the, it's, it's, it costs us five twenty-five. And you'll probably be upset with me saying this, but Ryan is paying three hundred. And the difference will take out of um this year's dues, we just had our meeting, so we'll take it out of one of the line items, the difference. Um, we don't need bears back. Sure.
Is there any we don't wanna fuck the, like the Airbnb business and that rental, you know, piece of it, is there, is this the town, can the town receive any funding from the properties that are renting their properties to cover that cost?
Well, interestingly enough, there was legislation that we represented this year at many municipal to be able to tax Airbnb's differently than we tax regular properties, because that's actually leading to the housing shortage, because people don't have places to stay anymore, right? You used to be able to, you lived in Bar Harbor, you rented out your little apartment and to somebody who worked at the restaurant and that was great, well now you can Airbnb it for three times as much and they're being taxed, main tax laws require that every property be taxed fairly and equitably. So that there's no ru- room in our constitution that allows towns to tax them differently, um that failed, but it 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 is a discussion that's ongoing cause it's a bigger deal in the coastal communities than it is.
Uh, just for the sake of uh understanding it better, I looked up one of the properties, I know that's an Airbnb on our road and um went to the site and just put in some false dates you know, that I wanted to reserve. And it was a nine night stretch. And it was four thousand seven hundred some odd dollars for nine nights. It was like six hundred and eighty-seven dollars a night they're getting. And uh.
And so, and those people will buy, will buy property, right, like if you're so that's just driving up the housing market.
Yeah. Yeah.
It it good for them, right, for getting that money, but again, you know, thinking about the the town's gonna potentially pay for those people who aren't residents coming in and producing trash, just making a mess on your road, is there a different way to look at it?
It's only my speculation, but I think I can safely suggest that the folks who are renting them are not folks from local.
Yeah.
It's, it's the Boston lawyers and doctors.
Yes, you're right.
Yeah.
Well, you know Cynthia's range.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't hotels get taxed differently? That goes to the state, though, that doesn't go to the town. The lodging tax, and I think you have a lodging tax on Airbnb's. And I rent a lot of Airbnb's and there seems to be an increase in, yeah, but it goes to the state, it doesn't go to the the local community.
To the town and act in the lodging tax plus the states?
And we towns are not allowed to enact their own special tax, they're not allowed. Cause a lot of towns would like to do that, like Bangor, you know, tax it one percent on your restaurants and you have it go to the city of Bangor. It obviously wouldn't do anything for Bradley, cause we don't have that, but a situation like that, yeah, for sure. But we're not, towns municipalities are not allowed to create their own special general use tax, real estate tax only.
Any other new business? If not, we will jump down to the next item, which is unfinished business. Unfinished business from you, Melissa?
No.
Unfinished business from the council? If not, um, I will make a motion to accept the municipal warrants that were presented this evening. Motion's been made and seconded on a municipal warrants, any questions on any of those? I I did have, uh, I guess two quick questions, there was a warrant for Harris Computing Systems for seven thousand fifty-one dollars.
Um, so we replaced a cash proceeding um computer.
Okay.
And a CEO's computer, so two computers that were just on our capital improvement plan that I tried to get out before June thirty.
And there was one other item for road repair tree removal, probably sixty-six hundred dollars.
So that was for John Milligan and he did some, several tree removals around stop signs. Um, Carter Woods, Penny Lane, he also removed some uh trees on our entry town line signs at the Eddington Town Line Signs. I don't remember what other trees, but he did a lot of, if you looked at his bill, it would highlight what it did, he added gravel to some shoulders uh, some driveways that were uh needed some repair, some shoulder work on Ten Road, Penny Lane.
Okay, you did a good job.
Yeah, I'm hoping, I was hoping that the contractor that was gonna do the shim would do some additional where he replaced the shoulders on Ten Road, cause we do it every year. Um, but he's too busy to do it, so we're gonna look for another contractor to come in and do some, some kind of repair work on a couple areas in town, Penny Lane, Elm Street has some areas that really need some spot repair, but not really a whole pavement, so.
Is there any questions on the warrant, we'll vote on those, Dwayne.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Marx and I. This one, I meant, uh, you probably should have mentioned this before, but one step back, I know this like, um, some paint marks lined on Boynton, is that for the?
That's just shim.
The shim, yeah, is that what it's called, it's cross or something here?
That's where the shim is going to take place from those starts to set, you can tell they go from like this to this.
Yeah.
Though that's where the shims will be.
Okay.
It's also on cram street as well.
Um, next meeting is set for July twenty-ninth. If we cannot make it, please let the other councilors in the town office know, we'll check the livestream where we close out for the evening.
Uh, no comments, just a prior that there was no sound, which I apologize for, so um, I'm not sure how that happened, but we have sound now.
Good, thank you for everybody for, for listening in, if you were listening in, uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn today.